Good afternoon. This is Friday, October 4th, 2024. I need a motion to return into our council meeting.
You read, oh, so move, Mayor.
We need to recess the meeting. We need to un-recess.
Okay, I move that we un-recess the meeting that was recessed on...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
All right, moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mrs. Thurmal in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
And then we have a motion for closed session.
I move that the city council adjourn to a closed session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of a prospective public officer, and to establish the amount of compensation and other material terms of a proposed employment contract.
Moved by Mrs. Abuziater, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, that passes unanimously.
We're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Once we come back center, we're five, four, three, two, and one. Once again, your right leg. So we're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. One more time, that right leg. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Come back up. Once again, another one of those marching it out breaks. Catch your breath, grab some water if need be. All right, now that everyone's finishing up, go ahead and tap. So we're eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Come back center. Next exercise, reaching across your chest. Right arm first, we're double time. So we're right here, right, we're left, we're eight, seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Once we're center, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. We're here, your right arm, eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Last time, we're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Come back up. Another one of those water break periods. Go ahead and tap it out while you catch your breath. All right, so we're gonna be eight, seven, six, five, we're four, three, two, and one. Come back center. Next, taking your arm over your head, right arm first, we're still double time. So we're right here, we're right, left, we're eight, seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Right arm, eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Last time, eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Come back up. Now the longer water break period. Go ahead and tap it out while you catch your breath and take that water break. All right, as everyone's finishing up, we're eight, seven, six, five, we're four, three, two, and one. Let's come back center. Go ahead and shake everything out. For this next set, we're gonna be doing some stationary exercises. So for your first exercise, feet are shoulder width. We're gonna do some jumping jacks. You can take it to a modified version, either single leg and single leg, or go ahead and do full out. So we're right here, up and down. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Then once you come center, so we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. We're here, up and down, we're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Once you're here, we're five, four, three, two, and one. Last time, so we're here, eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. So we're here, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Come back up. Again, that water break, catch your breath, tap it back and forth. So we're eight, seven, six, five, we're four, three, two, and one. Come back center. Next, we're gonna work on our abs a little. Let's go ahead and have those arms up. We're taking the opposite elbow, opposite knee. We're not necessarily bending down, but more so bringing the two together. If you cannot bring the two together, stop at your own comfortable stopping position. Let's stay on this right arm first. So we're here, down and up. Eight, seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Let's go ahead and try the left arm. So we're here, up and down, we're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Now that we're center, take it five, we're four, three, two, and one. Come back up. Once again, your right elbow, down and up. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Try the left elbow, same thing. We're down and up, we're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. And once we're done, we're center, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. One last set, your right, down and up. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Go ahead and try your left elbow, we're here, down and up. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, four, we're three, we're two, last one. So come back center, one last time, we're five, four, we're three, two, and one. Come back up. Once again, that water break is there. Go ahead and catch your breath, tap it back and forth. And as everyone is getting themselves together, catching their breath, let's go ahead and do an eight count. We're eight, seven, six, five, we're four, three, two, one. Come back center. Next, let's go ahead and move down to lower body. So your feet are still shoulder width. We're gonna go ahead and squat down. We're taking three steps to your right hand side, then taking it back three steps this way. So we're right here, go ahead and take it, one, two, and three, left side, one, two, three. Once again, one, two, and three, once more, one, two, and three. After you stand back up, let's go ahead and do your cardio. We're five, four, three, two, and one. We're center. Go ahead and brace yourself. We're one, two, and three, left side, one, two, three. We're here, one, two, three, last time, one, two, three. Once you brace yourself, go ahead and cardio, five, four, we're three, two, and one. One last time, here, your right side, one, two, three. So we're one, two, three, once again, one, two, three, one more, one, two, and three. Let's go ahead and do cardio, five, four, three, two, and one. Come back up. Let's go ahead and take that longer water break. Go ahead and catch your breath, tap it from back and forth. So as everyone is finishing up, catching their breath, let's tap it out. We're eight, seven, six, five, we're four, three, two, and one. Come back center. For our last section, we're gonna go ahead and do some strength. If you have your weights with you, go ahead and get those out. And we're still standing up nice and straight. We're gonna go ahead and take our weights, have them right in front of you, do what's called a deadlift. So from this point, we're leaning forward and then coming back up. So we're forward and up, we're eight, and up, seven, we're six, and up, we're five, we're four, and up, we're three, we're two, and up, last one. Come back up. Since we have weights in our hands for our cardio, just tap back and forth from your left and right, do a five count. So we're five, four, three, two, and one. Your feet are still shoulder width. Let's go ahead and bend down, down and up. We're eight, and up, we're seven, we're six, and up, we're five, we're four, and up, we're three, we're two, and up, last one, and up. Go ahead and tap back and forth. So we're five, four, three, two, and one. One last time, so we're down and up. We're eight, and up, we're seven, we're six, and up, we're five, we're four, and up, we're three, we're two, and up, last one, and back up. Go ahead and tap back and forth, five, four, three, two, and one, and come back center. That water break is there. As everyone's catching their breath, kinda shake it out for a moment and doing their water break. All right, and as everyone's finishing up, let's go ahead and come back center. Next, we're gonna take that right arm up to your shoulder. As we pulse up and down, we're taking this left arm out to the side. So two different directions at one time. We're right here, up and down. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, four, we're three, two, last one. Let's go ahead and switch arms. Left arm is here, take the right arm up, up and down. We're eight, seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Come back in, go ahead and do your cardio, tap back and forth, five, four, three, two, and one. Come back center. For your next exercise, go ahead and take your right arm, do your bicep curl. At the same time, your left leg's doing heel digs. So we're right here, we're up and down. Eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Go ahead and try the opposite arm, do the same, up and down. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. And as we come back center, tap it out. We're five, four, three, two, and one. Once again, your right arm and left leg, up and down. Eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Go ahead and switch arms. We're up and down. Eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Then go ahead and come back center, tap it out. We're five, four, three, two, and one. Come back in. That water break and catching your breath is there for you. And as everyone is getting themselves together, go ahead and tap it back and forth. So we're eight, seven, six, five, we're four, three, two, and one. Let's come back center. Feet are shoulder width. Next, we're gonna work on some reaching, starting with your right arm. Lean down towards your left side, then take the left arm and do vice versa. So we're right here, your right arm is first, down and up. We're left arm, up, we're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Come back up, doing our cardio, tapping back and forth. We're five, four, three, two, and one. Back center, your right arm, down and up. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Come back up, cardio once more. We're back and forth, we're five, four, three, two, and one. One last time, your right arm leads the way. We're down and up. Eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Come back up, go ahead and tap it out. Five, four, we're three, two, and one, and come back center. Once more, that water break and catching your breath is there for you. And as everyone is doing so, go ahead and tap it out. So we're eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Come back center. To finish out our weights, go ahead and do your arm curls with both arms. We're right here, up and down. Eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, four, we're three, we're two, last one. And once you come back in, that cardio. We're five, four, three, two, and one. Back center, your arm curls, we're up and down. Eight, seven, we're six, we're five, four, we're three, we're two, last one. Back center, go ahead and do that cardio. We're five, four, three, two, and one. One last time, we're right here, up and down. We're eight, we're seven, we're six, we're five, we're four, we're three, we're two, last one. Come back in, tap it out, back and forth. We're five, four, three, two, and one. Let's come back center. Go ahead and place those weights down. That concludes our high intensity cardio. Let's get ready to end our session with a nice cooldown. And as everyone is finishing up their water break and just getting themselves together in general, let's go ahead and stand with your feet shoulder width apart. Always important to start with your breathing. Go ahead and inhale nice and deeply, and exhale. Inhale one more time, and exhale. Let's go ahead and start with your head. Look towards your right hand side and hold it there. And come back center. Let's go ahead and look towards the left hand side, hold it there. And we're back center. Let's go ahead and take the right ear, drop it down and hold it. And we're back center, opposite ear, go ahead and do the same. And we're back center. Let's go ahead and take the right arm across your chest. Give yourself a big stretch if you like to. That wrist can be rotated. Go ahead and take your fingers and touch your thumb. And bring that arm down nice and slow. The left arm does the same thing. Give yourself a big stretch, rotate that wrist. Your fingers are touching your thumb. And bring that arm down. Go ahead and take the right arm behind you. Your left arm is helping it, and give yourself a stretch. And we're back down. Let's go ahead and try the left arm, do the same thing. Nice big stretch and just hold it here. And we're back down, nice and slow. While your feet are still shoulder width, go ahead and come down nice and slow to your knees and just hold it there. And we're up nice and slow. And while we're still here, one last time, down to your toes or to a comfortable stopping position and hold it here. And we're up nice and slow, still standing up nice and straight. Let's go ahead and work on your breathing once more. Inhale nice and deeply, and exhale. Inhale again, and exhale. Let's go ahead and add your arms. Inhale, and exhale. One last time, inhale, and exhale. And as we come back center, take those shoulders and rotate backwards. So we're one, we're two, and we're three. Thank you, guys.
This Add Health to Our Years presentation is brought to you by Greensboro Television Network and the Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Department offers a variety of Ahoy classes throughout the city. These classes are designed for older adults and are free to those 55 and older. For more information about this exercise program or additional senior activities, please call the Smith Senior Center at 336-373-7564. Watch GTN for more exercise programs to add health to our years.
Hi, I'm Tim Lewis, health and fitness specialist at Alamance Regional Medical Center. If you think you're too busy to exercise, think again. Today, we're gonna show you some exercises that you can fit into your busy schedule, not only at work, but anywhere. All right, first up today, Kathy and I are gonna show you some things to do. We're gonna start with some parallel punches. We're gonna take it nice and slow. This is good for your cardiovascular and your heart health, all right? Hit with the part and just punch forward. If you find this is too slow or too easy, you can always speed up. Totally up to you. Remember, we're talking about your exercise here. Now, we're gonna add our legs into it, into what we call board breakers. And all I want you to do is reach, grab your board, and break it. Break it, break it, break it, break it. Remember, we're gonna go for about 30 seconds before we switch. If you find that's too long, you can shorten your time. And we've gotta work both sides of your body. So let's go ahead and switch to the other side. Break it. Good, Kathy. And now, we're gonna tie the two of those movements together with some punches and some board breakers. Your right foot forward, right hand punch, left hand break. Right, left, 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 break. And let's get ready, switch it to the other side, left foot forward now, and left, right, break. 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 Remember, if it's too fast, you can slow down. If it's too slow, you can speed up. All right, we're gonna add some strength into the exercise today. We're gonna do some squats, and it'll serve both as strength training for your lower body as well as cardiovascular health for your heart. So Kathy, what we're gonna do is start squatting, up and down. If your knees are not the best, you wanna stay a little higher in your squat. If they're pretty good, go a little lower. If you feel like you're not being challenged, go lower than that, okay? Then we're gonna add a second dimension to this with a knee up on the right side. Knee up, squat, left side, knee up, squat, right side, knee up, squat, left side, knee up, squat, knee, squat, knee, squat, knee. Keep that going for about 30 seconds or 15. If you need a break, take one. Not too long, keep moving. Then we're gonna add a right kick, kick, squat, kick, squat, kick. In your squat, make sure you got your eyes up so you can see. Having your eyes up keeps your back in the right position. All right, now that we've concluded all the exercise portions, we're gonna go ahead and cool your body down with some flexibility. Even if you're in your office doing this work or feel a little tight, you can do these, okay, Kathy? So take your right arm, bring it across your chest, and pull toward your body as hard as you can till you feel discomfort. You don't want pain, you just want discomfort, okay? Now, each stretch, you wanna hold for about 20 to 30 seconds so you can allow some elasticity to set in, and we'll go to the other arm now. So bring the left across and pull as close as you can. You feel that, Kathy? Now, you should feel this around your shoulder going into the upper back area. All right, now, let's relax that. Now, take your right hand, reach over and grab your pocket. That right- That right wrist, grab it with your left hand and pull down toward your pocket. You'll feel that almost going into your neck, but not quite, and along your scapula. Again, for all you keyboarders out there who hands are fixed on that keyboard, this is a good one for you. And let's take it around to the left side, reach around through that pocket, grab your wrist, and pull down to your pocket. All right, hold that position. Remember, stretches are going to be done for 20 to 30 seconds. And relax. Okay, now what I want you to do is step your right foot straight forward, all right? Bring your chest back, roll your shoulders. Roll your shoulders. You want to squeeze toward the back. Squeeze toward the back. Now, pull your shoulders back and hold them there. Push your hips forward. You should feel a slight pull on your left side, your hip flexor. Raise your left arm up and lean back even more to intensify that stretch, all right? If you start to wobble, widen your feet because you do not have a good base. And let's change that to the other side. Let's get your left foot forward now Kathy. Remember, shoulders back, push your hips forward. Feel that pull on the right side because it's important. Put your right hand up in the air and lean back. And remember, if you feel a little wobble from side to side, spread your base of your feet and that should get you a little bit better. Thanks for joining us here at Alamance Regional Fitness Center. Anytime you need assistance with any of these exercises or any exercises, come see us here. Get up off your seat, start moving, take care of your entire body. I hope these exercises today can help make a big difference. For more information, come see us or go to conehealth.com/fitness.
The city of Greensboro takes pride in the host of reinvestment activity taking shape in East Greensboro. Equitable investment on the east side has been an ongoing effort to enhance the quality of life for our residents, students, and visitors. A hub of recreation is evidenced through the downtown Greenway, which touches all walks in different ways. Construction continues on the final mile of this one-of-a-kind four-mile Greenway. The western branch winding from Smith Street to Spring Garden Street is expected to be open in the summer of 2025. The walking and biking Greenway connects at least a dozen neighborhoods, including Old Ashboro, Southside, Douglas Park, and the Dunleith Neighborhood, all on the east side. There are more than $600 million in planned and completed projects along the downtown Greenway. This urban loop enhances quality of life with a variety of fitness classes, community walks, and an emphasis on public art, cementing Greensboro's reputation as a creative city. With the connections to the existing and planned trails in the city and the county, this loop is the center of the entire system and will one day connect us from all parts of the community and beyond. A future East Greensboro Greenway will connect the J. Douglas Galleon Depot in downtown to Barber Park. In collaboration with the city, NC DOT is developing a feasibility study for the route of the East Greensboro Greenway. The first phase of the Randallman Road Corridor enhanced transportation services and encouraged additional reinvestment on the east side. The city will work with a consulting firm to assist with drafting a plan for the southeast area, which spans approximately eight square miles. Recommendations based on significant public input will guide the future growth and development necessary to improve services and connectivity for a variety of established neighborhoods in the southeast area. The city is investing $3 million of American Rescue Plan funding to revitalize our oldest golf property with prominent ties to the civil rights movement. The Gillespie Golf Course Master Plan relies on the facility's historical and cultural relevance as a guide for future improvements. Additionally, we applaud the PGA Reach Foundation for awarding a $250,000 grant to commission a mural of the Greensboro Six. These courageous men integrated the Gillespie Golf Course in 1955. The city is taking a new approach to meet the needs of the East Greensboro community in a way that has never been done before. Greensboro Public Libraries and Parks and Recreation have set out to create a centralized community hub, the Windsor-Chavis Noco Community Complex. Thanks to the advocacy of Congresswoman Kathy Manning, the city was awarded a $4.3 million grant from the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Program. This supports several much-needed improvements to Noco Park, which aligns with plans for the $65 million Windsor-Chavis Noco Community Complex. The community-approved design will integrate the existing Windsor Recreation Center, Vance-Chavis Library, and Noco Park. In collaboration with Guilford County, the 65,000-square-foot facility will incorporate public health, social services, and cooperative extension. It won't be long before the shovels begin turning the dirt on the first phase of construction. These initiatives offer a near glimpse of the metamorphosis of East Greensboro.
Have you considered a career in public transportation in North Carolina? In addition to worthwhile careers as a bus and train operator, public transportation would not exist without a variety of disciplines keeping North Carolina on the go. From customer service to maintenance, marketing, accounting, planning, legal, and much more, your career options have never looked bright. Now's the time to look beyond the driver's seat. For more information, visit NC Transit.
The impact Mayor Vaughn has had on economic development in our community is amazing. She's the kind of CEO that you're always happy to put in a room with visiting businesspeople who are looking to locate their facility somewhere. Or if you've got someone who's looking to expand, you're very comfortable putting her in that room. She knows what she's doing. She's been around the block on economic development many, many times. And she always projects a very positive influence for the city.
She has been a face of economic development and the importance of economic development for Greensboro. She's driven conversations with the city council and all other business leaders in a very significant way and the importance of creating jobs and being inclusive in her conversations that everyone should benefit from the growing economic impact of those new jobs coming to Greensboro.
One word for Nancy Vaughn, determined. And she stays focused. She drives towards that change she feels like is appropriate. And I think she's been determined for her tenure to make this the best possible place and the community of choice it can be.
Gosh, in regards to economic development projects that I've worked on with Mayor Vaughn, it's hard to think of one that I didn't work on with Mayor Vaughn recently, particularly some larger ones, obviously, involved with the Toyota site in Randolph County, which Greensboro was instrumental in providing the water and sewer for. Notably, another large one was the Publix, a distribution and manufacturing facility. There's going to be a Topgolf opening soon that Mayor Vaughn was very involved in as well.
Boom Supersonic, who cut ribbon very recently to open a new facility at the airport. The expansions of Volvo White Trucking Company, for example, Honda jet expansion, Marshall coming to the airport as well. And so, a number of new jobs being created in this region in Greensboro. And Mayor's had a big hand in all of the cool conversations as we engaged about the qualities of life here in Greensboro.
But I think too, not even the specific names, but the jobs or the projects that landed us 10, 15 jobs, where now those jobs are probably 100 employees. Those companies and those people and their family members that moved into neighborhoods that bought new houses, she represented the entire community to make sure that when we made investments and when we went to support businesses, that it was the right decision and it was right for the entire community.
From the perspective of the Department of Transportation, she's been great. She's served with me and a number of other elected officials on the Metropolitan Planning Organization for many years. So she understands the importance of transportation, all aspects from, you know, the airport to the loop and to our downtown Greenway as well as transit. The city's been a great partner and Mayor Vaughn's leadership has been instrumental in that. Congratulations, Mayor Vaughn, on this very well-deserved award. I can't think of anyone who's been more instrumental in economic development as a community leader than you have during your tenure, both as mayor and on city council. I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations.
Mayor Vaughn is a fellow recipient of the Stanley Frank Economic Development Award. Congratulations to you as this year's recipient. Very proud, very much deserved, and excited for you.
I'd like to say congratulations to my friend, Mayor Nancy Vaughn.
I just want to say thank you. I am so humbled to receive this award, especially given all the people who have earned it before me. But I am not accepting this award just for myself. I need to recognize my city council members and all of our economic development partners. Economic development is a team sport, and I am just so happy to have been on that team.
Hop on and hop off the Free Hopper Trolley in downtown Greensboro. Access to shopping, dining, entertainment, and more. The Free Hopper Trolley has arrivals every seven minutes during service. Each of the free trolleys are equipped with air conditioning for you to enjoy as a group or an individual. Avoid searching for parking downtown and easily stay connected with GTA buses for travel throughout the city. Each trolley features historic images and audio as well as courteous drivers ready to serve you. The free service runs Thursday through Saturdays, noon to midnight, and Sundays, noon to 10 p.m. Track your trolley live at trackmyGTA.com.
Our program here is a great opportunity for different levels of students. Our goal is to get them a job, to get them working in the fire service. Guilford County, just like every other county in the state, is hurting for emergency services workers. So our goal is to help fill that void. We have equipment here that nobody else in the state has. And the cool thing is, its sole purpose is to train emergency responders to go and do their career.
I chose to be a firefighter because, and it's a little played out, but I just wanted more opportunities to do the right thing. If I was talking to a future student, I would tell them that the Fire Academy is all that you need to be prepared. You can be a citizen on the street, and in six months, you can be fighting fire. And you're fully prepared. It's a good academy.
I am getting the tools and hands-on that I actually need to go into my future career. It's definitely a lot of physical, it's a lot of mental. It is not for the weak of heart, but if you feel that you are up to this task, come to GTCC and find out.
Hey, mister, are you okay?
Oh, hi. I'm sorry. Thank you for asking, but no, I'm late for an appointment and I missed my garbage pickup this morning, again. And my kids want to do something fun this weekend, and I have no idea what's going on. And my wife just called, she's stuck in traffic in a construction zone we didn't know anything about. I just don't know how to keep up anymore.
Mister, you need to get the GIST.
I don't need to get anything. I've got too much to do to be sick.
No, the GIST is information.
Look at me. I'm still catching up on emails from last week. I don't have time to dig through more information.
Dude, take a breath. The GIST is short and sweet. It's everything you need to know about your city.
Oh, wow. That's why I miss my trash pickup. Oh, and look, a mountain biking class. My kids would love that. So it looks like the road will be closed for another week.
Uh, mister, uh, your bus?
This really is everything I need to know.
Now you've got the GIST, but you're going to need a ride. You just missed your bus.
Oh, how does this keep happening?
Get the GIST today. Subscribe at greensboro-nc.gov/GIST. When rain or water hits hard surfaces like pavement, it creates stormwater runoff. This picks up lots of nasty pollution and drains out to the rivers, streams, and lakes that hold our drinking water. Here's some things we can all do to stop stormwater pollution. Nobody likes to step and poop. Pet waste can spread disease and contaminate our water sources. Never let your dog roam freely to use the bathroom. And always scoop your pooch's poop and throw it away in the garbage can.
When I came here, I was really surprised on how many things I was able to get my hands on and be able to do and how many things I was able to have access to. It was really surprising for me.
It's more in-the-shop, in-the-lab time than it is in-the-classroom time. Something I like about the instructors here is that they have real-world welding experience. It doesn't really get much better than that.
Take whatever low-level welding we have, whether it's basic welding or a summer camp, just to give it a try. Make amazing happen at GTCC. It's real.
I chose GTCC because it's not only one of the best programs, it's also one of the only programs in the state that offers recording engineering.
You're going to grow no matter what because you're the average of everybody you hang around.
They want us to know everything that's out here in this industry, and I appreciate that.
Hop on and hop off the Free Hopper Trolley in downtown Greensboro. The Free Hopper Trolley has arrivals every seven minutes during service. The free service runs Thursday through Saturdays, noon to midnight, and Sundays, noon to 10 p.m. Track your trolley live at trackmyGTA.com.
Everyone has a different journey towards becoming a parent. Having policies in place that support all types of families are super important.
Employers who offer a family-friendly workplace attract and retain the best talent. They also have workers who are more productive and more satisfied in the workplace. My name is Lisa Fialdi. I am the Community Engagement Leader at the North Carolina Early Childhood Foundation. Family Forward NC Employer Certification is working directly with employers to look at benefits that they can offer that are good for them in the workplace as well as employees and ultimately, the health and well-being of young children. This is an exciting project with Action Greensboro and the Greensboro Chamber of Commerce.
My name is Chad Oakley, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the Chief Executive Officer here at Charles Aris Executive Search. We became a family-friendly certified employer to be more competitive in the marketplace when it comes to talent and to retaining our talent. Anytime you can increase an employee's flexibility in their life and also if there are opportunities to spend time with family members, it's good for business and it's also good for society. Our lactation room came about by just thoughtful listening. We had an employee who gave birth, left for maternity leave, and then came back and said, "I want to be in the office, that's important to me, but I do have this challenge." And we said, "Let's create a solution for that."
I'm Ashley Wagner. I'm a Vice President here at Charles Aris. When we started our family planning journey, we started with adoption. Adopting a child from another country can look very, very different. At first, we thought we were going to be abroad for four to six weeks. So I was planning my maternity leave policy. We found out a week before we were scheduled to travel abroad that we actually were going to have to be there for at least three months. It ended up being five months. We ended up welcoming our second child by birth abroad. There are a lot of things that didn't look like our initial plan. Every time I had to come to Charles Aris with another ask, I was welcomed with like grace every single time for them saying like, hey, we will do whatever you need, right? Like, we care about you, we care about your family, and we want this to be a good experience. I also don't think I'd be as successful coming back to work, having not had the time off that I did. I feel like my bond with my family, my bond with each of my girls has only been strengthened because of the fact that I was able to take that time away and then come back to work really prepared and knowing what I wanted. The best way to support an employee who is also a parent is by supporting them as a parent first.
My name is Melvin Skip Austin. I'm Chairman of the Guilford County Board of Commissioners. We're proud that Guilford County is a family-forward certified organization, and we're hoping that all of the other businesses within our community will follow that.
I am Nancy Vaughn, and I am the Mayor of the City of Greensboro. It was really exciting that the City of Greensboro was recognized as the first large city certified family-forward community.
We know that now our childcare is costing more than a college education. We're proud that we are addressing these problems in Guilford County, and that's what it's all about. As one Guilford County, all of us being on the same page, wanting to grow together in order to benefit each other.
To be a future-ready community is so important that it really defines what our values are and what we see in our future employees that will help us attract greater talent. Because not only do we want the city to be certified, but we want our community to be certified and really lead the way when it comes to recruitment and retention of employees. certified and really lead the way when it comes to recruitment and retention of employees. Hello, I'm Greensboro Mayor Nancy Vaughn.
Hello, I'm High Point Mayor Cyril Jefferson, and together, we're working to address gun safety in our communities.
More than 500 guns were stolen from homes or vehicles in Greensboro last year.
High Point recorded 75 stolen guns in 2023. As a result of these alarming numbers, we are promoting responsible gun ownership.
If you own a gun, keep it locked and unloaded. This can reduce the number of unnecessary injuries and deaths.
And if you know a gun owner, remind them to keep their firearms locked and unloaded.
Do your part to keep your firearms off the street by securely storing them and encourage friends and family to do the same. Remember, secured guns save lives.
If you can make a good first impression, it might make all the difference and create a lasting spark, because it's never too late for a little romance, and it's never too soon for a little charm. I found date night in downtown Greensboro.
The following segments are pre-recorded and sponsored by Longworth Productions.
Back now on this special edition of Try Today, as we salute, meet, and talk with some great folks who work behind the scenes in the city of Greensboro to improve quality of life for all of us. And I'm just so glad to meet these great folks. One of them is sitting right next to me. Mike Borchers is Director of the Water Resources Department in the City of Greensboro. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
My way of Saratoga, New York, and now a North Carolinian.
Absolutely.
For how many years? You've been down here for how many years?
Oh, over 20 years.
All right. I'll make you official. You're the official Southerner.
I appreciate that.
Now, most folks, seriously, now, most folks don't realize the magnitude of the system that you oversee. I'm gonna put you on the spot. I mean, how many miles of water supply and sewer lines does Greensboro have? I mean, because it's massive.
It is. If you look at the entire city and even outside the city of Greensboro's jurisdictional limits, 3,000 miles, they add up water and sewer lines, 3,000 miles that we are responsible for.
What's the most challenging aspect in trying to oversee something this massive?
Oh, right now, in today's day and age, there's a couple of factors. First, it's staffing. As you know, we've, many industries and businesses have seen very difficult times hiring people. So it's that, and it's knowledge retention. So we have, of course, attrition like everyone else, but when you lose a 30-year employee, they retire, it's so hard to replace that. And then the other big thing is materials. So not only costs, but supply chain issues has been another big issue for us in maintaining our system.
You know, Mike, I don't have to tell you that we've had tremendous growth, not just in Greensboro, but look at the things going in Randolph, Winston, all over the area. In that regard, how are you planning for capacity in your job and what you're doing?
That's a great question, and that's really the role of the Director of Water Resources is working, of course, with the City Manager's Office and City Council, is how are we planning for the next 50-plus years? So we do a couple of things. We do master planning on the water and wastewater side, but the other thing we do is we look at, okay, how can we build the current capacity that we have? On the water treatment side, I'm just very thankful for my predecessors, former council members, as well as our current council, and they had the forethought to invest in the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority. So that's Randleman Reservoir, you may be familiar with it. They've got a water treatment plant right there. Greensboro has a 53% ownership stake in it. So Greensboro, right at the get-go, said, "We want to be a partner." So 53% of whatever that water plant makes or produces, it comes up to Greensboro. So we're expanding that plant. So Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority is starting the process to do the design to expand the plant to about 21 million gallons per day, and we will get a portion of that as well.
Speaking of partners, I'm thinking about the Greensboro-Randolph mega site. What kind of impact is that gonna have on what you do?
Oh, absolutely. A very big one from an economic development standpoint. We have been very fortunate in our region to see all of the economic development, whether it's, you know, at the airport, whether it's down there in Randolph County at the mega site. So for us, it's a big impact as far as planning for the future. How can we, we're ahead of the game as far as meeting Toyota's needs. We know exactly how much water and sewer they need. So now for us, it's how do we plan for the ripple effect? You know, those secondary and tertiary suppliers and builders.
We thought you and I have just talked about big corporations. We talked about partnerships. We talked about growth. We talked about all this great stuff, but if somebody's watching, saying, "Hey, Mike, I'm just one person here. What does all this benefit mean?"
Well, first and foremost, we're not going to forget our customers. That's the most important thing. You know, we have about 119,000 metered accounts, and so the first and foremost, we take care of our current customers. But also, I think if we support economic development, that has, again, that ripple effect, has the opportunity for jobs and for us to continue to experience the growth and the development that we all'd like to see. And then again, it's just planning for the future is really what it comes down to.
Well, before time runs out, I'm just curious. You and I've never met until just now. You're in a very kind of technical, complicated field, and a very important one. What drew you to that? I mean, what was the interest?
Oh, for me, it starts back at college. So I went to school at New York Maritime College up in New York, marine engineering, went into the Navy for five years. So I served my country in the nuclear power program. And then when I got out, I worked for a company ultimately in Tennessee, but made my way over to North Carolina where I worked in Moncur at a plant making industrial polyester. So my whole career has really been operational and technical. So for me, it was just that draw of being able to serve, you know, and from a technical standpoint, our community. So it's just been a great blessing.
Well, I'll tell you, my friend, we appreciate your service, not only to the country, but to this area, where you're doing lots to keep us growing and growing that capacity. Up on screen, greensboro-nc.gov is the general website that I'd like for you to check out. Mike, thanks for everything.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
For all of us here on Try Today, I'm Jim Longworth. We'll see you next week.
I'm a senior chemistry major here at UNCG, and I work in organic synthesis. I've always really liked science. I've always been really curious about why things happen, the way the world works, and just wanting to know more. And chemistry was just really fascinating to me about understanding, because chemistry drives everything. Biology is driven by chemistry. Space is driven by chemistry. Our bodies are driven by chemistry, and it's just fascinating to me. It's sort of an interesting story. It wasn't where I was planning on going, but through a series of different events, I ended up here, and I wasn't planning on staying. And after my first semester, I fell in love. I had this really incredible chemistry teacher and some other professors in different areas that weren't my major that were really kind to me and like had reached out to me and were really helping me through this tough period in my life. And I started to feel at home here and feel welcomed, and that's why I decided to stay. And I'm so glad that I ended up here, even if it was by chance. It was the best thing that's happened. I think my family is probably my biggest inspiration. I think I have two younger cousins who, they're both really smart young girls, and we all sort of come from this background of there not being a lot of education in our family. And I didn't have anyone to look up to. No one in my family had gone to college. And so I feel really driven to show them that they can go after more, and they can go to college, and they can be successful. So my plan right now is to pursue a PhD in chemistry, so I'm currently working on those applications. And long-term, I'd like to become a professor and have a research lab of my own. UNC Greensboro, find your way here.
I don't know why I'm so sad. You've got a roof over your head.
You gotta stop with that depressed stuff.
That's what white people do.
You all right?
It just feels like it's coming from everywhere.
Do you want to talk about it?
You can talk to me if you're feeling sad.
Whenever you need to talk, I'm here, okay?
If you can make a good first impression, it might make all the difference and create a lasting spark, because it's never too late for a little romance, and it's never too soon for a little charm. I found date night in downtown Greensboro. neighborhood toolbox? Did you even know there's a neighborhood toolbox where you can borrow tools to use on your house or on your lawn for free? Larry, how did this program get started?
Well, technically, the program got born out of need, especially around the community with people who couldn't quite get their yards mowed or the maintenance that's required to keep your yard in compliance with the city of Greensboro.
And so someone came up with the idea, well, if we have tools to lend, then that can be less of a problem. We can make these accessible to everybody.
Yes, our director, Michelle Kennedy, wanted to promote a program, or we could offer tools to help the community. So with that being said, the Neighborhood Toolbox program was born. We kind of did quite a bit of community engagement with community watch groups, HOA, to kind of put this out there to let them know there is a place to be able to get help.
So this started in 2023, summer of 2023, basically. And about how many people used it?
Roughly right around 300 people last year. We're anticipating a little more this year.
Right, so a little earlier start this year and get the word out. And what kinds of things are you lending?
Our most popular ones are pressure washers, lawnmowers, and weed eaters. But as you can see, we have shovels, rakes, vacuums, anything that you'd need to keep your house in order.
What do you like about this program?
That it's free. You just stop by, tell us what you need. If we got it, we're gonna let you borrow it for a week, and you can bring it right back to us.
It's a pretty good deal. I like free. Do you like free?
Yes, ma'am.
So Mark, how does the program actually work in practice?
Well, the way this works, if a customer would like to borrow something that we have, they can go on to the city's website and go to the toolbox page. They can find a list of the tools that we do have. They can also click on a link where they can fill out an application if they see something that they'd like to borrow. Just a few questions, and then what tool they want to borrow, what particular day they'd like to pick it up and bring it back. And then one of our staff members will call them, make arrangements, and tell them what day and time that they can show up and just pick it up.
It sounds like a pretty simple process. How's it worked so far? Did it go pretty well last year?
It is a pretty simple process, and we had a pretty good response. We were really pleased with the response. In fact, we had between 200 and 300 applicants last year. We couldn't help everyone. Certainly, you know, pressure washers are high in demand. We only have so many. So that's a little difficult. But we were talking to another program in Texas, and they said the first year, they only had 100.
Oh, wow.
So I think we did really well.
And so I know people are thinking, did the tools actually come back? And do they come back in working condition?
For the most part, yes. We had a couple of incidents, but nothing that can't be corrected.
And stuff happens. Things break down and need repair and need some, a little love every now and then, that's for sure. What do people tell you, you know, customers or neighbors, when they are able to check out this equipment and use it and, you know, get their lawn or fix something around their house?
It ranges from disbelief, what, really? I can do this for free? It doesn't cost me anything? No, that's just what it's here for. And then a lot of gratitude, you know? I wouldn't be able to do this if I didn't have this option. This really has made a difference for me. When someone's lawnmower breaks, and they may not have the money to have it fixed right away, but they want to maintain their lawn for instance, you know, it's there for them. Or if they don't want to buy a pressure washer, they only need it once, there it is.
How would you like to see this program grow?
Well, I'd like to see it expand as far as the list of tools that we have available. What we have now is pretty basic, but I'd like to see what we have grow, and ultimately, it'd be nice to have Brick and Mory, you know, just a fixed location where we have a place where people come inside, a place for us to do maintenance. That would be nice.
How does it make you feel to be a part of this program?
I've really enjoyed it. I've been in code enforcement for about 20 years, and it's been frustrating when you find a customer who doesn't have access to something and you wish that you could...
Have a conversation with my manager, of course. I'll buy it at least through next November.
But if they don't have the money to do it, it's nice to have that option.
You're offering solutions.
Trying. That feels really good.
Want to find out more or check out a tool? Go to greensboro-nc.gov/toolbox. Welcome inside the brand-new Claxton Elementary School, one of five brand-new Guilford County schools set to open this school year. As you can see, there are so many upgrades with this new school, including all of this flexible seating that teachers can move and shape to what works best for their classroom, technology, whiteboards on every wall, and so much light from the windows to the glass doors, which allows students and teachers to grow and flex to the needs that they have every day in the classroom. What do you think about this new school?
It looks amazing. It's really big, and I feel like this is a college.
Do you think it's gonna be easier to learn here?
Yeah, of course. With so many more rooms, it's not gonna be as crowded as the last school.
Girls, what do you think about your new school?
It's amazing. Definitely, I love it.
I'm just speechless. This is amazing.
What are you most looking forward to coming to school here?
The chairs.
The chairs, and last time we were in like a big janitor's closet, it was so tiny, so I'm excited for a big room.
I'm just really excited about everything. Like, this school is huge, and I'm so excited.
Liam, what do you think about this brand-new school?
Awesome. I'm only gonna be at the school for one year, but I'm excited about it.
All right, Principal Tema, how do you feel with this new school opening at last?
Oh, this is amazing. I mean, look around, all the colors, the smiles on these kids' faces. That's what it's all about.
So tell us about some of the features of this new school.
There's extended learning areas where kids are gonna have opportunities with flexible seating, to work collaborative groups, problem-solving. We've got maker space in the media center. Our classrooms are open. We've got flexible seating throughout the whole building, movable furniture. Just the opportunities this is gonna provide our students is gonna be amazing.
There's so much light here. There's windows. There's lots of glass doors, and you can just see so far and kind of in all the spaces.
Yeah, it's a bright environment, a welcoming environment. And the visibility it's gonna provide our teachers to be able to visually see our students to make sure that we keep them safe and allow them to be able to use this whole building as a learning environment.
And we're standing in a gym, which you didn't have before.
A gym that we never had. Our PE teacher's gonna be amazed, and our students are thrilled with it. They no longer have to walk downstairs into a little room for gym or have it outside. They've got this amazing space that they're gonna be able to participate in.
Well, and this is, of course, an exciting time for the Claxton community, but really for all of Guilford County, because this was the first school to open from what became a $2 billion bond that is supporting our schools. What is it like to be at the beginning of that?
I think it's great for us, great for our community, but great for Guilford County and within the direction that they're headed and what the schools that are gonna be built under this bond is gonna do for all of Guilford County and all of the students.
The new Claxton Elementary was made possible because of two bonds equalling $2 billion for Guilford County schools. You can keep up with the progress of all the bond projects by going to gcsnc.com. You're probably familiar with the Discovery House at the Greensboro Science Center. Well, it's gonna be going away soon, but don't fret. Something bigger and better is coming. It's a biodome, and it's gonna house some amazing plants and animals. Jessica, we're sitting in front of some plants we haven't seen around here much.
Oh, this is actually, we're starting to stockpile some of our more tropical plants. So this is just the beginning phases of our biodome, which is gonna be a more tropical oasis, so we have to start collecting our tropical plants.
Okay, so tell us about this biodome. Where's it gonna be? What's going to be in it? You know, what's the point?
Well, the point is, we just want to bring a new, exciting, never-seen-before exhibit to the Science Center. So our biodome concept is our latest foray into that, and it's potentially gonna be our biggest, most impressive build yet. So it's gonna be an entire indoor tropical oasis, and we're gonna have about six, maybe seven kind of exhibits within that that are gonna be different species and things that we're still working through. And then in the open public space, we're also gonna have free-flying birds. We're gonna maybe have some bats, and then we're gonna have a sloth, maybe more.
The sloth, or a sloth, is already here at the Greensboro Science Center. You can already visit with her, right?
Yes, we can. So we've kind of joked that it actually takes a long time to get a sloth. So, I mean, like, they're slow for everything. So we actually had already been on a wait list trying to get one, actually for the last three years, because we had wanted to have one originally in our aquarium space. And so we finally got the, you know, one that was placed for us. And so we weren't gonna turn it down and wait at this point, so we're like, we're gonna take it. We're ready. And then we'll just move her to the biodome when that's ready.
Her name is Indy, and she came from not too far away.
Nope. So she was born at the Brevard Zoo, and she's just a little bit over two years old. So she's still young, and hopefully will be with us a long time.
Okay, and we get to see her eating sometimes, and she moves a little bit quicker than people might think she would move.
They, yeah, they can. You know, when they decide to get up and be active, she's actually really curious. She likes to explore her environment. We know that they do go swimming. We haven't seen that with her particularly, but when we've had other sloths in other places, you'll see them wet, like, you know, they do enjoy swimming. So they go down on the ground. They can do some really interesting things.
What's most interesting to you about the sloth?
Probably just their whole system for eating. They have a really weird, like, metabolism. It's really slow, you know? So like, how we process foods and eat, you know, is so different for them. And they eat really interesting things, so they're just very, almost prehistoric in a way. You know, like, they're very ancient with some of their biological systems.
Very beautiful. She's a two-toed sloth, is that right? And there's also three-toed sloths. Can you tell us the difference other than the toes?
Um, that's, that's the big one, is the two-toed. Similarly, you know, they're body-wise, they look pretty similar. I do believe the lines, which is the two-toed, is bigger, a little bit more robust than... Three-toeds are also called Hoffmanns, which, my last name, I didn't get the Hoffmanns, but... So I think body size is another indicator.
They have those faces that just draw you in. I mean, they really do. It's just the personality all over them.
Yeah. Oh, my God. And she's got such an engaging personality already, so we're really excited. We do hope to have sloth encounter programs when we do have the biodome set up. We're gonna build to have it be really public-friendly. And so she's gonna be a great candidate for that when we're ready to go with those programs.
We can tell by just watching her eat, for sure. And you can see her right now in the aquarium space at the Greensboro Science Center.
So we have our original Amazon exhibit that is in the aquarium that was part of our original build. We do hope to move basically that entire kind of exhibit. We're building this big new tropical oasis. Of course, we want to put Amazon in there. So we hope to actually move all of those animals into that new space. And so she would definitely be a part of that. But it was just a perfect natural exhibit for her to live in right now. So she's with our Titi monkeys and our tamarins and our Amazon fish and our freshwater rays. So it's a really nice space for her to kind of hang out for a couple of years.
Yeah, to get used to things, to get the lay of the land, and she'll be like the, you know, the old mom when everybody else comes into the new biodome. So we're gonna, we can hear a little bit of construction happening and moving. We're gonna, as we visit the science center, we're gonna see dirt moving, things coming down, things going up. Can you tell us where we should look out and where we can watch it grow?
So if you're familiar with our outside zoo, as soon as you come out, the doors that are like, take you right into the entrance to the zoo, there's that plaza, really starting from that entry plaza and then working your way to the right where it was our building called Discovery House, where we had small animals. That's the whole site that's gonna be demolished for the new biodome build. So we've already made some movements. Our Nile crocodile, we actually already had to move out because it's gonna impact the exhibit that was his. So that's gonna get, that's gonna get displaced pretty soon. But then we're gonna start doing demolition throughout there. We're gonna put up construction fences. We're gonna start moving dirt, and we're gonna start building.
And when do we think this might be the place to visit? I know, the million-dollar question.
That is the million-dollar question. I think realistically, we're looking at, you know, kind of from this point right now, about a two-year build, maybe. So that's sort of, I mean, ideally, sooner the better. But probably getting really into starting demolition and construction, maybe at the very, like, start of next year.
There is always something new to see at the Greensboro Science Center. You can visit Indy seven days a week at the Greensboro Science Center. Find out more by going to greensbournoscience.org. The Greensboro Fire Department has a brand-new tool to help educate children and adults about fire safety. The Greensboro Fire Safety Trailer is on the road now, thanks to committed city staffers and a generous community partner. Sharon Maney is the past president of the Kiwanis Club of Greensboro. How did the club get involved with this city and this particular gift?
So Kiwanis of Greensboro, our mission is to support children, one community and one child at a time. And our club typically likes to help the children who are hungry. So this was brought to our attentions for the need to educate children how to cook and how to feed themselves and how to prevent fires. So we were thrilled to be able to have that opportunity to engage and be involved.
So of course, you've been involved with the project from the very beginning. To see it actually here in person, actually getting ready to go out to schools and to community centers and to really go to the children, what is it like?
For me personally, it sort of closes that gap and that loop. But it's also very touching to know that, to hear the chief today to say 75% of fires with children start in the kitchen and to know that when you're thinking about hungry children and trying to cook, the fact that we could do something, not only to help feed them, but to help prevent them from getting an accident, it's just powerful. It's incredibly powerful.
And have you been able to tour it yet?
Not yet, but I'm on my way.
We're gonna start today with a demonstration on severe weather here in our new safety trailer. We can demonstrate an earthquake, a flash flood, a hurricane, or a tornado. We definitely would warn folks that if they have any children with sensory issues or who may get scared, that this does get very, very loud. We have a subwoofer in here that goes up to about 80 decibels. We will simulate thunder and lightning, but I can stop it at any time. This includes the city of Atlantic City, Southern Gulf County, the Panhandle, Florida. This includes the city of Fort Smith, Georgia, 6:45 p.m. Eastern daylight. At 5:15 p.m. E.C., National Weather Service, Tom Correia, our community development coordinator, will be here. Think there's a fire outside. See the smoke coming through? What we want you to do is feel the back of the door, and if it's warm, well, it is warm. And we wouldn't want you to open the door, right? We'd keep that door closed. And we could get something in the room. Do you see anything in the room where we can block that smoke?
Pillow.
Pillow or the towel, right? So we could get the pillow or the towel and cover that up. Cover that up to stop that smoke from coming in. Oh, look, we got more fire. I pressed it. Call 911. We're gonna practice calling 911. And do you know your address?
Do.
A lot of kids don't know their address, so we work on that. And then call 911, and we go to the window and wait for the firefighters to come, and we can now speed through the window. Welcome to, once again, to the Greensboro Fire Life Safety Trailer. We're going to demonstrate our kitchen fire now, being the number-one cause of home fires, not only in Greensboro, the whole state, but the entire country. So a lot of times, people will leave the kitchen, they'll not be paying attention to what they're doing, and that's when most culinary mistakes, as we call them, will occur. So we're gonna start by turning on our fire on the top of the stove. We'll turn on our burner. You'll start to hear it's making a little bit of a hissing sound as if it were a gas oven. We'll start our fire on the top. We'll begin to emit smoke. I can also start a fire inside the oven. That'll start to go. We have working smoke alarms here in our safety trailer, and they have turned on. We have a heating source up above us that will simulate that it's getting hotter and hotter in the kitchen area. Now we're at a point where it's either time to get out or if we have a person that has the ability on the comfort level of using an indoor fire extinguisher, they can attempt to put the fire out themselves. We would recommend probably a five-pound A.B.C. rated extinguisher. That's for common combustibles. We always want folks to remember the acronym OF AS, which is pull, aim, squeeze, and sweep. Pull the thing out of it, aim it at the base of the fire, squeeze the trigger, and sweep it around. So we're getting to the point where it's getting pretty hot in here. Are we able to put this fire out? I think we have a volunteer here that wants to help us. You can just aim it at that fire. It's gonna hit a green dot, and it'll put it out. So you're taking care of that fire. You can go ahead and try to put it off down there. But our number-one suggestion to everyone to have a fire inside of their oven is to close the door. Try to keep the heat in there and prevent the fire from spreading even more. One of the great things is, I can also stop the fire demonstrations at any time. And for some reason, it's gotten to opt for someone, or we're getting a little bit of smoke in here. We do have a fan that will take the smoke out, but that's a simple demonstration on a stove-top cooking fire. Of course, if you don't have an extinguisher around, the number-one thing that people can do is simply put a lid on top of the pan. Take the air away from it. We can simulate a fire over here in our trash can. We can simulate a fire up in our cabinet. And it's the same thing. If you aim the extinguisher at it, you can put the fire out. There we go. As we take a look at electrical hazards throughout the home, in our bedroom fire, we do have, the door can get smoked up. We can also have an outlet that will smoke, and there is also an air conditioner. And the biggest thing with any electrical appliance is simply unplugging. This toaster was used a little bit earlier. We'll plug it in. Somebody else knew that there was a problem with it. I plugged it back in and started to use it, and it's smoking. So the number-one thing you do is unplug it right away and take away that power source from it, because that's gonna solve most of your problems. The microwave as well, we can get to start to spark and everything like that. Sometimes people may put aluminum foil in there by mistake, or they have an electrical short. Again, simply unplug it. Again, our working smoke alarms are going off that we have here in our safety trailer, and hopefully everyone in the city of Greensboro and surrounding areas has those working smoke alarms as well. And they know that they're not expired because they are manufactured within the last 10 years. So let's smoke it up real high. Let's do everything. Give it a little bit of time. Let's really let it get warm in here, really let the smoke start up. And even so, we could turn the interior light off. Let's turn that light off.
Oh, my God. Oh, that's amazing.
Let's give it a little more time. Let's let it get quick and smoked up. Now, as you watch this start to grow, obviously, this smoke is fake, but you have two minutes or less to get out of your residential dwelling in the event of a fire. So the smoke is going to start to back down closer to the ground. We tell people as soon as the fire strikes that you can get out and stay out, because that smoke is gonna get to where you're no longer gonna be able to breathe. If this were real smoke making its way towards us, we've had this on for probably 45 to 60 seconds. If you were to go up into there, you would probably be overcome by the smoke and not able to get out. So this is getting over to a little bit too big for us, but for this scenario, we'll go ahead and let you put it out. We think we can handle it from back here. So our trash can is going out, our pantry is going out, we have the stove-top fire, and we'll go ahead and kill that fire in the oven. And you can see everything is heated up up top here to get that simulation of the heat that is starting to rise into the ceiling from something burning. Oh, this is so cool. This is amazing. This is the future. And if y'all really want to be scared, look down at the outlet. Turn the kitchen light on.
Oh, my gosh.
Thanks to Councilwoman Abusa Wader, we escaped that kitchen fire, and we all learned a whole lot about fire safety. Again, look for the Fire Safety Trailer on the roads, going to community celebrations, to schools, and all kinds of groups to help educate children and adults about fire safety. Greensboro is home to the Carolina Cowboys, the only professional team to call Greensboro home. And you're gonna want to get to know these athletes. All right, Coach, tell us about this team.
I'm pretty excited. We've got a really awesome team with Richard Childress being the owner and Austin Dillon being the general manager. Just blessed to be the coach of it. I mean, we've got a really good team. We've got a lot of world champions on our team. We've got Sage Kim, the PRCA World Champion many times over. We've got two world champions with Cooper Davis and Daylon Swearingen in the PBR, and just a lot of good guys. A lot of national finals average winners. So our team that we got together is as strong as any team out there. If we can keep them healthy, we got a good chance to win it all.
What's it like for you personally to coach these young athletes?
You know, I kind of, when I got hurt 20-some years ago, it kind of, I stayed in the sport hauling these bulls up and down the road, and it's all I've ever done. But when this whole team concept come around and they asked me if I'd be interested in it, you know, it kind of put a new fire under me. It's something new, and it's exciting to see our sport grow and how fans are taken to it. It's, I've been in this sport a long time, but I've never seen fans draw to a sport the way they have this, did with this PBR teams.
That is a lot of fun. And what does it mean to be part of a team? I mean, this has always been an individual sport. It was an individual sport when you did it those years ago. So how does the sport change now that there are teams?
You know what's crazy? That exactly what you're saying, we was in Ridgedale, Missouri last week at Johnny Morris's place, but the guys trying to help each other. We used to see some of that, but now that everybody's on a team, it's unbelievable. Like, you know, everybody tells their little secrets, you might say, you know? And you just watch them guys pull together and try to make this team better. At the end of the day, it's just really awesome to watch it all come together.
All right, is there something special we should look for when we're watching? For those who are new to the sport, to like, really get the most out of it, what should you be looking for when you're watching?
Well, at the end of the day, what I always tell my guys, if you can see them, you can ride them. And what that means is, when you put your hand in that bore oak, if you stay focused and stay looking at the middle the whole time and just keep trying your butt off, at the end of the day, you can get the whistle. But if you see that guy look off and look at that ground, you won't see that Carolina Cowboy the next day. Let me put it that way.
Keep up with Mayor Greensbull and all the Carolina Cowboys. Follow them online and check out the ride. It is showing now on Amazon Prime, and it follows the real-life story of the Carolina Cowboys. Cowboys.
Special meeting of the Greensboro City Council. I do need a motion to return to open session.
Motion to return to open session.
By Mrs. Abuza Waiter, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimously. I am going to read a resolution in. Resolution appointing Nathaniel Trey Davis as city manager. Whereas Nathaniel Trey Davis has served the Greensboro community in a variety of leadership roles over the past 20 years, and whereas the city council finds that Nathaniel Trey Davis has the professional and personal qualities that make him the best-suited candidate to serve the residents of Greensboro as the next city manager. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro, that effective October 4th, 2024, Trey Davis is hereby appointed city manager of the city of Greensboro. Further, the mayor is authorized to enter into an employment agreement with the city of Greensboro and Trey Davis, setting his salary as city manager at $300,000 with a monthly executive allowance of $1,000 a month. Seconded by Mrs. Hightower. We are going to take a recorded vote. I'm going to do it voice vote. Mrs. Hightower?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Matheny? Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mrs. Simms?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mrs. Abuza Waiter?
Yes.
Mr. Holston?
Yes.
And I am a yes, and that passes 9 to 0. Mr. Davis, welcome. Would you like to have any comments for us?
I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity. This is the opportunity of a lifetime. I've worked with you all for a number of years. This is really exciting for me, and just the opportunity to do the work that we can for the city of Greensboro. I know that there are a number of things that you all, the council, have set out as priorities and goals, and we have a really strong team here in the city of Greensboro. I'm happy to lead that team. That's probably the most exciting thing. I apologize to you all. It is exciting to work with you all, but the people here that work for this city are truly amazing, and that's one of the most exciting things for me, to be able to, to work with them and get the things done that, that the community and you all know that we need for our city. So I'm ready to get to work, and let's do it. Thank you.
And I do want to thank the interim city manager, Chris Wilson. Chris has, has had that role twice, but what he has done this last year, I think, is really pretty amazing. You have kept the city running at a quick pace. We, we did not slow down. We are in an incredible period of growth and development right now, and your leadership in that has been absolutely pivotal. And I want to say thank you for helping us through this transition, and I know you're going to stick around a little bit longer, and for that, I am grateful, and I know the city is grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Congratulations, Mr. City Manager. I'll have to get used to saying that, but I think it's a good sound to hear, and I look forward to a positive move forward for city citizens of Greensboro. So, thank you.
Well, let's, let's, let's do it.
Yes. Mr. Davis, thank you for accepting the city manager position, and I know that you will move forward with the same commitment and dedication that you have for the last 20 years. So I'm looking forward to working with you in this capacity. Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to the safety. I'm very excited to have you in this role, and I think it's a great opportunity for Greensboro, and thank you for your service in the past and the service that I know you will be, step up to in an amazing way going forward.
And congratulations. I am looking forward to working with you and seeing things move forward. Have faith in you. Looking forward.
Congratulations, Trey. Look forward to working with you.
Just remember, Trey, the services rent we pay for living on this earth.
Well, that is all our business for today.
Move to adjourn.
Back at Mr. Matheny, seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.